New equipment, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school board meeting and welcome back to City Hall. Last week at Appalachia High School in Georgia, two students and two educators were killed and nine others wounded in a senseless act of gun violence. Please stand for a moment of silence to honor their lives. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Wilkowsky, would you please take the role?
Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Spall.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Bland.
Here.
Ms. Breeden.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Dr. Newman, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No ma'am.
May I get an approval?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Superintendents, announcements, and spotlights. Mrs. Radford.
Good evening, Chair Seberg. Thank you so much. Good evening to all other members of the board and good evening to everyone that has joined us in our return to City Hall tonight. I am very excited to share with you one spotlight this evening. We're going to talk a little bit about, you know, at the start of the school year, there's so much that goes on behind the scenes and a lot of times our community, our families, don't know all of the things that are happening to prepare our schools for opening. Well, tonight, we want to give a shout out to a special group of people who helped make a lot of that happen. And so I have Director of Student Health Services, Nurse Gina Bellamy here tonight, and she's going to talk a little bit about some of the great things that some special people were doing on the front lines to help us get into school this year. Nurse Bellamy.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman. Thank you for having me. I just want to acknowledge our effort this year. This year, we had approximately 0.5% of our students held out for noncompliance. Considering our population of students, that comes out to be less than thirty or, excuse me, thirty or forty students. Our goal, of course, is to be zero, and we're working on it. But I just want to take about sixty seconds to thank school nurses, many who came in over the summer off contract, the clinic attendants, the school liaisons who helped, who continue to make phone calls and follow-up phone calls with parents, the interpreters, school office staff, our principals who helped lend their school office staff to this endeavor, and of course Deputy Gaffeler, who was always there to support Student Health Services. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nurse Bellamy.
Thank you. I just wanted everybody to know that joint effort brought our numbers down to the lowest they've ever been, really. And so we are just really so proud of the collaborative work that all the team did to make that happen. And again, we wanted to let our community know and hear that firsthand tonight. So thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Before we move on to Board Committee reports, I would like to acknowledge MEA leadership in the audience tonight. We have Anna Di Maria, Tammy Potts, and Jenny Higginbotham. Thank you for being here. Board Committee reports, I'll go first to Chairman Hollingsworth for the Academics Committee.
Thank you, Chair Seberg. The Academic Committee met back on August twenty eighth to discuss the governor's new cellphone policy. After reviewing, we decided to hold off and wait to hear more from VDOE, any further guidance from VDOE. So we've received that and I think our next targeted date to meet is on the twenty-fifth, if I'm not mistaken. This will have chair.
Thank you. Let's see. Mrs. Spall for Educational Support.
Yes, thank you. As Educational Support Chair, I've been invited to some meetings recently that I'm excited to report on. For Communications, I'd like to say that our School Board has heard loud and clear that individual family and employee experiences do not necessarily match what our community reads online about the school division. Our Board is looking for a way to combat misinformation and disinformation about MCPS. I'm recommending a communications audit because I feel that MCPS needs to find a way to rebuild trust and confidence, improve communication infrastructure, develop a stronger, more proactive media relations plan, expand on our MCPS strategic communications roadmap, strengthen the two-way communications culture, implement tactics to engage external stakeholders, and combat misinformation and disinformation, once again. We have launched some new newsletters this fall and a new website is already launched. As much as I want this communications audit to begin immediately, we believe that the need to let the dust settle before we judge ourselves on such new pieces of marketing. So we ask for your patience as we navigate this fall and then begin a fifteen or more month, week task of really reimagining how our school system may communicate with its audiences. As the time unfolds, there will be potential for as many as a hundred different stakeholders to participate in the audit process. So if you have anything at all to say about MCPS communications, we ask for one hour of your time to have your feelings documented, and all input is welcome and necessary. So we ask you that you spread the word. There will be, you know, some flyers coming out about how to do that. Also, New Dean, we recently engaged in our forty-first Design Committee meeting for New Dean. Our project is on time and on budget, and our committee is engaging at every level of the process. And then also, as in terms of increased student opportunity, we have an upcoming Manassas Regional Aviation Committee, Aviation Academy meeting coming up. So I can't wait for those details for this exciting partnership to be, start to be revealed. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Next up is Citizens Comments. Is there anybody that would wish to speak? Has anybody signed up? Nope. Anybody at all? Okay, well, we'll move along. Motion for the Consent Agenda, please.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Vice Chair Stevens. At the School Board, the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Up tonight on our discussion agenda, Dr. Jennifer Casada, Executive Director of Accountability and Finance, and Mr. Craig Gaffeler, Deputy Superintendent, will provide an update on the strategic plan focused on student academic success. Dr. Casada will share published standards of learning, the SOL performance, accreditation status, and graduation data. Mr. Gaffeler will share the strategic response to the student performance data in place for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, in line with the pillars of the strategic plan. Dr. Casada.
All right. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, School Board members, and Dr. Newman. Tonight, as you heard, I'll be providing an update on student performance data that have been recently released by the Virginia Department of Education, as well as some that will be published hopefully this month. And when I finish, Mr. Gaffeler will discuss the strategic response to these data. All right. VDOE has updated our school quality profiles with SOL pass rates from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Accreditation, attendance, and graduation data have not yet been published by VDOE but are part of tonight's presentation. Key findings we will share tonight include the fact that our SOL data show some growth, but also an ongoing need for an acceleration of learning. The student performance portion of tonight's presentation provides a big-picture look for MCPS in our schools. We will share early literacy data, SOL pass rates, attendance data, accreditation data, and graduation data. After I complete my section of the presentation, Mr. Gaffeler will provide the strategic response to the data in line with the pillars of our strategic plan. He's going to highlight some efforts connected to the inclusive and collaborative learning environment, culture of caring, and quality workforce pillars, all of which represent efforts to provide aligned foundational supports to schools and students. He will end with some next steps by laying out the schedule for some school-specific presentations that are coming soon. All right, here we go. First, we're going to look at some early literacy data, both for pre-K and grades K through two. The first two slides show the performance of our pre-K four students on the vowels in the fall and spring. This slide shows us performance in the fall, and you can see that the majority of our students were in the beginning stage across the four domains that are the building blocks of early literacy. So the beginning is indicated in red, growing in green, and strong in blue. Next, we move to the spring, and this slide shows that performance. You can see the growth and that the majority of our students had moved to the strong level across the four domains. Building a strong literacy foundation for our youngest learners sets them up for success in elementary school and beyond. All right. This slide shows us the performance of our students in grades K through two on the PALS assessment and reading. It shows us for students in grades one, K one and two, the percent of students meeting or exceeding benchmarks in the fall and then in the spring, both for our division as well as the state. It's important to note that there are different benchmarks for each grade level and that the benchmarks in the spring are harder than those in the fall. You can see that in kindergarten, MCPS matched the state in terms of percent of students meeting benchmarks in the spring. And in first grade, MCPS exceeded the state in the spring due to the amount of growth made by our students from the fall. In second grade, MCPS was behind the state, but the gap was much closer in the spring than it was in the fall. It's important to note also that, beginning with this school year, early literacy assessment in grades K through two will be different, using the vowel system rather than the PALS. So stay tuned for what that's going to look like. All right. The next section of the presentation, which is the longest section of the presentation, is about SOL pass rates. So it's important to know these pass rates represent pretty close to raw data, meaning the percent of students who pass an assessment in a particular area. We're going to share some reading, mathematics, and science data, and we've got data included for the twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four school years. As I mentioned, these data are on the VDOE school quality profiles and can be accessed using the Assessment tab of those profiles for the division and for schools and the state and other divisions as well. So we're going to look at division and school-level data for reading and mathematics and some test-level data for science. We're then going to delve into some cohort analyses for reading and mathematics at the end of this section. All right. So this slide shows us the overall reading pass rates by school and the division, the division is to the far right, for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. On this slide and the next, the blue bars represent twenty-two, twenty-three, and the red bars represent twenty-three, twenty-four. Most schools maintained or improved their overall reading pass rates. We're going to delve into grade-level performance a little later in the presentation. I'll leave that up there for folks to take in. Also, for the public and anyone watching, this presentation is available on Board Docs where you can see it full page if you want to see the numbers a little bigger. The next slide shows us the performance in mathematics by school and the division. Again, the division is at the right, and the schools go from elementary to intermediate, middle, and high school from left to right. So we're going to delve into grade-level performance in a minute, but, and some reasons for the dips you might be seeing it are elementary schools and mathematics. So our school leadership teams are digging into the reading and math data at the school level, as well as by tests and student group, to identify those areas most in need of support and improvement in their buildings. So also, students in grade three through eight have been and are completing the Fall Virginia Growth Assessments, which will provide schools and teachers with more up-to-date information about their student needs. So this next slide includes performance on the major SOL tests that are administered. All students are expected to take SOL tests in science in grades five and eight, as well as in biology. So you can see that scores on all three of these tests improved from twenty-two to twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, with the largest gain coming, a significant gain coming on the grade-eight test. For the next part of the presentation, I'm going to discuss the performance of groups of students over time. It's really important for us to look at student performance in multiple ways. Cohort analysis allows us to look at the performance of a given cohort over time as they progress from grade three to grade four, or grade four to grade five, et cetera. In reading, these analyses are nice and simple because all students in grades three through eight take the same test that corresponds with the grade level that they're in. However, for mathematics, the analyses are more complicated because students begin to get accelerated in mathematics in the middle grades. Students are assessed with the SOL test that coincides with the level of content they are learning, which may not coincide exactly with their grade level. So this year, we're going to break that performance out in a way that helps us better look at trends, particularly in light of some of the changes in math instruction and assessment that took place last year. The next two slides include the cohort analyses, and color coding is used for us to identify cohorts. Okay? This first slide is color-coded to help you see the cohorts of students and their performance in reading in twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm calling it a cohort analysis, but it's important to note for any statisticians in the room, it's not a true longitudinal analysis, since students may have moved into or out of the schools, but it does capture trend data for groups of students as they progress from our, through our schools. So I'm going to walk through the cohorts. Okay? The purple cohort was in grade three in twenty-two, twenty-three, and in grade four in twenty-three, twenty-four. You'll see that the pass rate for that cohort increased by eleven percentage points from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. You may recall that third-grade reading in twenty-two, twenty-three was a concern, so the growth of that cohort is encouraging and builds on the early literacy gains we've also been seeing. In addition, third-grade performance in twenty-three, twenty-four was also significantly higher than third-grade performance was in twenty-two, twenty-three, if you look at the cell that is not color-coded. All right, that's the first cohort. The second cohort is the blue one, and that was the one in grade four in twenty-two, twenty-three, and grade five in twenty-three, twenty-four. This cohort also showed gains from grade four to grade five. The green cohort was in grade five in twenty-two, twenty-three, and grade six in twenty-three, twenty-four, and the performance of that cohort stayed level. The yellow cohort was in grade twenty-six, in, sorry, grade twenty-six, grade six in twenty-two, twenty-three, and grade seven in twenty-three, twenty-four, and this is the one cohort that showed a decline in performance. And finally, the orange cohort was in grade seven in twenty-two, twenty-three, and grade eight in twenty-three, twenty-four. This cohort showed a slight increase in performance. So this is the reading, the reading chart. And again, eighth grade from one year to the next, since we don't have a cohort going to ninth grade, also showed a slight improvement. It's important to note, we can't have high school on here because there's a gap between when students take assessments in grade eight for reading, and they don't take it again until grade ten, and the content of the test is different. The tests in grades three through eight are also aligned now on a vertical scale. All right. Here comes the complicated slide. This slide is also color-coded to see the cohorts of students and their performance in math in twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. You'll notice the colors represent the same cohorts that they represented on the previous slide. And you can see, just from looking at the volume of numbers there, that it's more involved. Understanding the first two cohorts is just like with reading, since all students took the same tests in grades three, four, and five. That purple cohort, right, was in grade three in twenty-two, twenty-three, and four in twenty-three, twenty-four. You'll see that that pass rate increased slightly from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. Now, the blue cohort, I want to call your attention to, was in grade four in twenty-three and grade five in twenty-four. This cohort showed significant gains, thirteen percentage points from grade four to grade five. For the remaining cohorts, we need to do some additional breakdowns. So you'll note that some of the numbers here are in bold, and that represents the full cohort, but then we break it down to show you the different tests that they took. So let's take a look at the green cohort. The green cohort was in grade five in twenty-three and grade six in twenty-four. However, for the first time, we had some students taking the sixth-grade test and some students taking the seventh-grade test. So overall, the performance of that cohort increased slightly, right, from forty-nine percent in twenty-two, twenty-three to fifty-three percent in twenty-three, twenty-four. But as you can see, the trends are different depending on what test they took. The students who were identified for advanced mathematics took the seventh-grade test. Ninety-eight percent of those students passed that test. For the students who took the sixth-grade test, forty-six percent of them passed that test. All right, now, the yellow cohort, that's the one that was in sixth grade in twenty-three and seventh grade in twenty-four. Again, there was additional differentiation in twenty-three, twenty-four than in the previous year. We had students in seventh grade who took three different SOL tests, depending on their background and level of mathematics. Some took the seventh-grade test, some took the eighth-grade test, and some took the Algebra One test. Overall, the performance of the cohort decreased from grade six to grade seven. And overall, thirty-one percent of, thirty-one percent of those students who took a grade-seven test passed it, which was nearly identical to the grade-seven pass rate in twenty-two, twenty-three. In contrast, ninety-two percent of those students who took the eighth-grade test passed it, and one hundred percent of the students who took Algebra One in seventh grade passed the SOL test. And finally, the orange cohort was in grade seven in twenty-two, twenty-three, and grade seven, I'm sorry, in grade eight in twenty-three, twenty-four. Again, students in eighth grade took one of three different SOL tests, depending on what they had taken the year previous. Some took the eighth-grade test, some took Algebra One, and some took Geometry. Overall, the students, percent of students passing an SOL test stayed level from grade seven to grade eight. As with the previous cohort, the challenge was mostly with the students taking the eighth-grade test, because all students taking the Algebra One test passed it, and eighty-one percent of the students taking Geometry passed that test. Again, just like before, the cohort stops at eighth grade because of the nature of tracking Now, we're going to look at some attendance data. Okay. Different color coding, and these don't represent cohorts. Chronic absenteeism has been identified as a national challenge, especially since the pandemic. And chronic absenteeism, for folks who don't know, is defined as a student missing ten percent or more of their school days. So if a student is in school with us for a hundred and eighty days, that would equate to eighteen days. In order to be at Level One for accreditation, schools must have fifteen percent or fewer of the students identified as chronically absent or have shown significant improvement from the previous year and be in the Level Two range. In twenty-two, twenty-three, all schools in MCPS were identified as Level Two or Level Three for chronic absenteeism. Level Two is denoted on this slide in yellow, and Level Three is denoted in red. For twenty-three, twenty-four, the picture was different. Eight of our schools moved to Level One for chronic absenteeism, with significant improvements in each of those buildings. Only Osborne remained at Level Three. It's important to note the major efforts to promote the value of regular school attendance and to intervene with families when students were frequently absent were in place at all schools. In this section of the presentation, I'm going to focus on accreditation. This slide shows the accreditation ratings for each of our schools. These rating designations are actually the same as last year, with all elementary and intermediate schools accredited and the middle and high school accredited with the conditions. Mets was identified as at Level Three. You can see this shows the rating and then what Level Three indicators exist. Mets was identified at Level Three for mathematics and for mathematics achievement gaps. Those achievement gaps in mathematics were for our black students, Hispanic students, students with disabilities, and disadvantaged students. And Osborne was identified for science, achievement gaps in math, and chronic absenteeism. There, the gaps were for our disadvantaged students and students with disabilities. Again, a school is designated at Level Three for an achievement gap if more than one group is at Level Three. More color coding, again, not representing the color coding from before. The next two slides provide some data for each school and how the components of the combined rates in English and mathematics work. So accreditation rates are shown for the past two years by school. So you see the schools at the bottom, and then you see twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. Note that accreditation ratings are given for the school year that we're in based on the prior-year data, which is why the ratings are for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. It's all to keep us on our toes. This slide is for English. English includes both reading and writing, but it's important to note that writing is only included at the high school level for twenty-four, twenty-five. It used to be middle and high school, and way back when, it was also elementary school. So this combined rate includes multiple components, which are shown in the stacked bars on this chart and the next. So I'm going to tell you what those sections are. The blue sections represent the students passing the tests. It's important to note, though, that due to the adjustments that occur in accreditation calculations, the pass rate sections of these bars, those blue pieces, will be different than the SOL pass rates we discussed on earlier slides. Neither one is wrong, they're both right, they're just different calculations. The red sections include students who passed the test, who had failed them the previous year, which is called recovery, and schools get additional credit for them. The green section represents those students who did not pass the test, but who showed significant growth from their previous performance. And finally, the purple section represents those English learners who did not pass the test or make significant growth, but who did show significant progress in learning English. It's important to note that growth is not possible at the high school level because, not that there's not growth in student performance, but growth in accreditation ratings, since there's only one reading test and one writing test, and the growth measures are built for grades three through eight, because, again, those assessments are on a vertical scale. In addition, the remediation recovery piece doesn't work the same way at high school either. Also, the growth at grade three is analyzed based on comparisons to the fall growth assessment, and the other grade levels had comparisons to the previous year's SOL. You will see that the accreditation rates for all elementary schools are above ninety for twenty-four, twenty-five. The Level One threshold for English is seventy-five, and the Level Two threshold is sixty-six. This slide is similar to the last one, but for mathematics. You will notice there's no purple on this slide, as the English learner progress only applies in the English ratings, not in the mathematics ratings. Again, remember that the growth is not applicable at high school, as in grades three through eight, and recovery doesn't work the same way either. You can see that a good percentage of our elementary and intermediate school students did demonstrate growth and that the overall rate at Mets did increase. The Level One threshold for mathematics is seventy, and the Level Two threshold is sixty-six. Now, it's also important to mention that schools can beat, meet Level One or Two ratings for accreditation through an individual year, or a three-year average, or by reducing their failure rate. So this is only one piece of how they get to an accreditation rating. In this section of the presentation, I'm going to focus on graduation data. We're only looking at MCPS data here, as VDOE has not yet published state graduation rates. Sneak preview. The first slide shows the MCPS on-time graduation rate and dropout rate trends going back to two thousand and eight, which is the first year the on-time graduation rate was published. The blue, the blue line at the top is the on-time graduation rate, and the red one is the dropout rate. The on-time graduation rate represents the percent of students who graduate within four years of starting ninth grade, with extra time allowed by federal and state law for students with disabilities and English learners who remain in school. The on-time graduation rate for two thousand and twenty-four was ninety-point-one-seven percent, which is rounded on here to ninety-point-two, which is the highest it has been in the history of the statistic being published. The dropout rate for two thousand and twenty-four was seven-point-six, was seventy, seven-point-three in two thousand and twenty-three. These represent the lowest since two thousand and fifteen. This next slide highlights the growth that has been shown in the past five years, just to let you see the numbers a little bit better, both in terms of increases in graduation rates and decreases in dropout rates. These two things, of course, go hand in, hand in hand, as reducing dropout rates and keeping students in school contribute greatly to graduation rates being able to improve. It's also important to note that on-time graduation rates measure the percent of a cohort of students who are able to meet all high school graduation requirements within a defined period of time. And those are high school graduation requirements that are set by the State of Virginia for all students in the state. Students have multiple opportunities over the course of their high school career to demonstrate their mastery of content through course completion and SOL tests, including SOL retakes that may take place over multiple years. Annual SOL rates and pass rates and accreditation ratings for high schools are based on a snapshot in time and only include performance on a small number of assessments, not all of the course completion, the other high school graduation requirements. The final graduation data slide shows the graduation rate for some of our groups of students. All students, which is blue, English learners, which is red, students with disabilities, green, and economically disadvantaged students, which shows in purple. You can see that the rates are at their highest points ever for all students, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students. The on-time graduation rate for our English learners did dip slightly in two thousand and twenty-four as compared to two thousand and twenty-three, but remains at its second-highest point in the history of the rate. So here are some, we've just gone through a lot of information, very quickly. Here are some of our key findings from this data. Early literacy continues to be a strength, and it is encouraging that those great gains extended to grade three this year. And our SOL scores do show some pockets of success. Highlights include the sizable gains in grade five in both reading and mathematics, and the gain in science in grade eight, as well as student growth, both in what we see in accreditation, as well as across some of the cohorts. Excuse me for one second. Of course, the dramatic improvements in chronic absenteeism at most schools is a huge strength in the data and cause for celebration, as well as a commitment to continue the outreach efforts to sustain those improvements. Continued increases in graduation rates is also a major point of success. Now, as for challenges, our SOL data do show the need for an acceleration of learning for our students, especially as they move up to our higher grade levels. In this year, we saw the potential negative, negative impact of virtual learning in the data, as schools with virtual teachers for mathematics saw some declines in pass rates. I'm going to now turn the presentation over to Mr. Gaffeler, who's going to provide information about our strategic responses to the data. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the School Board, and Dr. Newman. Before I begin tonight, I want to recognize the incredible and hardworking staff that have joined us tonight. It is important to recognize that behind the data we are sharing tonight and the numbers are individual students, and behind the students, supporting them with their dedication and hard work, is our teachers and leaders from schools and every department across the division. Our educators give their time, energy, and talent to help our students and families Our educators give their time, energy, and talent to help our students and families across the city of Manassas, and I just want to say thank you for all of their hard work. As Dr. Casada shared, we have seen some gains across the division, and there is a need to accelerate learning for our students. Prior to the release of the SOL data by the Virginia Department of Education, our state superintendent reminded division leaders that we are only about four months into a three-year All-In Virginia plan. She encouraged divisions to stay the course. She also shared that 70% of school divisions made progress in reading in grades three through eight, and only 75% of school divisions made progress in math in grades three through eight. And I am proud to say that Manassas City Public Schools was one of those school divisions in both content areas. She also shared that Virginia still has a great deal of work to do to recover from the learning loss that happened during the pandemic, and we agree with that assessment, which is why our teachers and leaders across the division remain actively engaged through the continuous improvement planning process. During the presentation tonight, my main focus will be for SOL data on reading and math. This is because our strategic plan is centered around improving these two areas. Additionally, the All-In Virginia Initiative from VDOE and Governor Youngkin also prioritizes reading and math. We also included science and attendance data this year as well because it is a significant part of the accreditation system in Virginia. This year, we'll be presenting all of the data at the same time so a strategic response is more integrated. Our schools are actively engaged in the continuous planning process. As part of this process, school improvement teams use data and other information to determine root causes. Teams discuss things that worked well and led to gains that they want to replicate and identify barriers to student achievement. School improvement plans are being developed to target specific areas of need. As we have been having discussions, we identified that virtual instruction in elementary schools contributed to dips in SOL pass rates at specific schools. Due to teacher shortage and the fact that the previous year, we had a commensurate performance with virtual and non-virtual achievement, we partnered with Virtual Virginia to fill teacher classroom vacancies that went unfilled. We began the school year with 21 virtual teachers, mostly at the elementary school level. On the other hand, we saw gains in the pre-K VALS and pre-K2 PALS data. We are encouraged by the grade three reading data and believe that this is directly correlated to the work being done over the past three years in primary grades around literacy instruction. We also saw gains in grade five reading and math, and this is a result of careful planning, the delivery of engaging instruction, and the use of data to make decisions about next steps. We are now in year three of our MCPS strategic plan. Our strategic priorities remain A Cycle That Works, which is focused on understanding the intended VDOE curriculum, planning engaging lessons that are tailored to the needs of our students, designing and developing assessments that match the content and rigor of the Virginia standards of learning, and using data to make decisions about next steps for instruction through intervention and enrichment opportunities for students. Inclusive practices ensure that our students receive appropriate learning scaffolds and engage in lessons, have positive relationships with their peers and teachers, and feel a sense of belonging in our school and in the classroom. A focus on literacy, we have been focused on literacy for the past three years, and we remain so with the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. Instructional planning and delivery, we have remained committed to ensuring that students receive high-quality, engaging lessons in the classroom. In addition, it's important to mention that every school has embedded a block of time during the school day to provide targeted instruction and remediation for students. As I mentioned earlier, the Virginia Literacy Act is in full effect this school year. We formed a VLA Guiding Coalition last school year and are continuing to support the schools with implementing it. MCPS is set up for success in regards to implementing the various components to improve early literacy outcomes for Virginia learners. Due to the work of many educators, including members of the Virginia Literacy Act Guiding Coalition, this group of educators has led the way in preparing for the use of new reading program, establishing timelines to support the training expectations of the Virginia Literacy Act, develop regular communication updates, and we sent, that was sent out to the division, identified interventions that will be provided to support students' needs, and determined ways to monitor progress as we move forward with its implementation. This work will continue throughout the year, and I look forward to seeing the positive impact that it will have on our students. To reiterate what I just said a few minutes ago, our strategic priorities have not changed. We remain committed to improving literacy, promoting inclusive practices, and enhancing instructional planning and delivery. By implementing consistent practice processes through A Cycle That Works, we aim to increase student achievement by clarifying essential understandings and outcomes, aligning instruction with standards, examining curriculum alignment, and supporting differentiated learning. During the 2021-22 school year, we formed a guiding coalition and began introducing a new cycle focused on student academic success. In the spring of 2022, we sought feedback from staff on the implementation plans for this new cycle. One key piece of feedback we received was a need for an intentional rollout if we wanted this initiative to become an embedded practice. Staff emphasized the importance of a two-year rollout period with adequate support, resources, and time for staff. They strongly felt that a slow intentional approach would ensure that it becomes a standard practice to guarantee high levels of student learning. We have just completed the two-year implementation of the full cycle. As I said, at our convocation kickoff for 2425 school year, there is a quote that says, "If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together." Together, we have been, this has been our approach to moving forward in Manassas City. Last year, our assistant principals engaged in a leadership learning opportunity focused on developing and understanding of the response to interventions at work structure for behavior. The group established common language around the work. They collaborated together to develop a common understanding of the essential academic and social behaviors at each grade level to promote consistency and alignment across the division and establish baseline data to use a comprehensive assessment tool. This work has continued this past summer with our steering committee, which is now planning for our Behavior Solutions Guiding Coalition. This guiding coalition is comprised of school and central office staff. It is committed to creating a proactive system for developing positive academic and social behaviors across the division. The goal is alignment and consistency across all nine schools. This guiding coalition will also establish a multi-tiered system of support for both academics and for behaviors from preschool through graduation. We have also partnered with ITech, a VDOE-supported initiative that provides an alternative pathway to full teacher certification. In addition, we have collaborated with Participate Learning, which recruits licensed international faculty. These partnerships have assisted the school division in ensuring that quality teachers are in classrooms rather than relying on virtual instructors to fill vacancies. As I mentioned earlier, there is a training requirements outlined in the Virginia Literacy Act for teachers in grades K through eight. In addition to those requirements, MCPS is committed to moving forward with our strategic priorities. In effort to provide time for teachers to engage in professional learning while balancing the responsibilities of their roles, a proposal was made to the School Board to make adjustments to the 2425 school year. This recommendation that the Board supported and approved included additional learning early release days to provide additional time for our teachers. The revised calendar provides more time for professional learning, collaborative time, and independent work time. And our first early release day is tomorrow. We're excited about that. The master schedule at Mets was changed this school year to allow greater teaming of students. In addition, student support facilitators were hired to support students academically during the targeted support blocks. This is new for the 2425 school year. Additionally, we hired additional attendance officers. There is an additional full-time attendance officer at Osborne High School, an additional halftime position that was added to Mets Middle School, and these positions were funded through the All-In Virginia funding. It is not possible to address the individual school data and the strategic responses in depth during this overall presentation. As a result, we wanted to end this presentation by highlighting our upcoming presentations that will occur. At the next three school board meetings, school principals will come and make presentations to the School Board. The schools that were selected all have a Level Two or a Level Three accreditation indicator. The schools not selected all have Level One indicators. Each presentation will address their strategies for addressing their specific challenges. In addition, the October 22 meeting will include a presentation about attendance data and processes by Dr. Mandy Zayetz, who is our supervisor for student data reporting and attendance management. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the Board? Looking to my right.
Yes, yes, Mrs. Williams.
Thank you for all your hard work. I know this, this, every year, the reports seem to get more comprehensive, and I know it's a lot of work, so I appreciate that. But what you, both of you have already pointed out, we saw growth and we have a need for accelerated growth, so I'm not going to even, I think we'll ask specific questions to the schools when they come and present to us individually. I, may you please expand on the Behavior Solutions Guide Coalition and the Steering Committee? Is it, is it just beginning? What's the process? How long will it take? And once the Steering Committee has recommendations, are we going to see it before they're implemented?
So the Steering Committee started their work last year, and we have already met. The goal of that is to have something implemented this year. And what we want to do is have a multi-system so that we are responding to behaviors in the same way at all of our elementary schools, middle school, high school. And so we also, with the addition of, and you just approved tonight, our new student support coordinator, she will be taking a very active role in that because we want to make sure that we have a system in place and we have consistent processes across the entire division. So our goal is to have that, and when we have that, we'll bring it back to the Board.
Okay, thank you. I know we have been talking about this for years, so I appreciate the focus on it this year. Thank you.
It is a focus of ours.
That's all I have.
Mrs. Brooks.
Thank you for that amazing presentation. You guys definitely put a lot of time into it, and it's so nice to see the upward trends and that our course is staying the course upwardly. And thank you all for all that you do and all your support tonight. That's all.
Comments or questions? Mrs. Breja.
Thank you very much. This is a new microphone, so we're on a learning curve here. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the details and for embedding a lot of the answers to my questions that I sent for you in there, but I do have some things I want to follow up on. The first is, so before we had this presentation, I went back to our strategic plan, which does have goals articulated in it, which includes 80% pass rates in reading and math and 80% of students reaching fall, spring literacy benchmarks by grade two. And that was obviously, that seemed to me to be formulated around the PALS test, but now we're switching to VALS. And so how is this going? So how is that going? How is there, how do the VALS results now translate to that goal?
That's an excellent question, and so we will have to look at what that looks like once we have information about that performance at grade two, right? We can't use the pre-K VALS data to set targets for, for students by the end of grade two. We, of course, are still going to want our students to be reaching that level of proficiency, but how that looks and what, how exactly the measure is going to happen, you're going to need to stay tuned because we will need data, baseline data to be able to make those adjustments. So we'll be coming back. I'm sure with the recommendation to change a goal in the strategic plan once we have the information.
Okay. Because it's very good-looking data that we have on the VALS, but it also obviously does not translate to how we wrote the goal. So I just, and also going to PALS, you know, I do think it's very helpful that we are tracking how our relative performance is to the state, but I also do want to keep in mind that we should not lose track of the fact that our goal is actually 80%, regardless of what the, how the state is performing. You know, that is our goal separately that we need to reach, so just a little reminder there. Let's see. I'm trying to go in order, but I have two separate sets of notes. And you talk very fast, Dr. Casada, so sometimes.
Sorry if I went too fast.
No, no, no. It's, well, that's okay because we can go back and slow down. I want, on the accreditation combined ratings, which is everybody's favorite topic because of how complicated this gets, for reading, tell me again how EL progress is measured.
Great. So EL progress is measured for our English learners. Our English learners take an assessment that's called the ACCESS test. You may hear it called WIDA. It's got lots of different names. So that test measures their proficiency in several domains related to learning English, right? So students, there are thresholds that students need to make to make progress from one level to the next. So the students, our English learners who made that progress, right, get credit for that even if they didn't pass the SOL test in their given grade level or make the growth on the SOL test, which is determined by moving from one band to a next. I could get very technical on that, but the state gives credit to our English learners, right, in the area of English for moving forward. So it's using the ACCESS test, yeah.
Through a separate test that is in there?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because when you were quickly going over it, you were like, well, these are for kids who didn't show growth but also learned more English, and I was like, wait, let's stop and talk about that.
Yes, that's a good point.
Okay, all right. And these also, we're spending a lot of time trying to understand these, but these are all going to change next year, most likely.
Yes, and so we will be coming back for another presentation about the state's accreditation system, well, the state's accountability system, once all of the dust is settled with that. So they'll be coming out with more information for us, and we will come back to you and share all of that. It is going to look different. It's going to focus on mastery. There'll be an index score. There's going to be different things, but some of the components will remain, right? The targets for students passing SOL tests. There will be a growth component, and then there are other measures that will involve us wanting to dive into a lot of them, and they're going to look different at elementary, middle, and high school levels in terms of readiness, or growth and readiness are some of the things that they're going to look at. But we will, we didn't want to entangle the new system into this presentation and cause confusion perhaps of the public, but we will come back and do a separate presentation about the new accountability system once we receive a little more information from the state.
Keeps us on our toes indeed.
Exactly.
So my next question is going, fast-forwarding into the graduation data. I know that we are going to dive a lot deeper into all of, you know, into all of this, and so I'm not going to spend a lot of time here now. We can wait until Osborne has its turn at the lectern. But the graduation requirements are a combination, it's consistent across the state. It doesn't, you know, Osborne doesn't have a separate set. That's not how that works. Everybody has to meet the same thresholds. But, you know, SOL tests, everybody knows how that plays into it. You have to pass a certain number of tests. But what I think, I don't fully understand, and would like you to elaborate on, you mentioned briefly, of course, completion goes into that as well, and there are verified credits. Can you tell me about the verified credit system? How that goes?
Sure. So students in the state of Virginia, right, and have to have the opportunity to earn a standard diploma, an advanced diploma, there's some other things too, but they have a number of course credits they have to complete. So those are credits, right, what they call standard credits. In addition, there are five verified credits that students have to receive. Now, you may go, wait a minute, that's a different number. They've changed over time, but for the past several years, it's been five. And so it's one in reading, one in math, I'm sorry, one in mathematics, one in science, one in history, and two in English, one in reading and one in writing. So in Manassas City, as well as in most places in the state now for the history, those are no longer, most places are no longer using the SOL test to measure those. They're using local alternative assessments that were developed with and by the state. So they're more performance-based, which is, you know, best practice in the area of history, right? And then students have to earn a credit in mathematics, in science, and to, one in reading and one in writing. The reading and writing tests, there's only really one option. The other thing that comes into play is the federal government requires that students participate in particular tests, right? One in high school level, one reading, one math, and one science, and they've designated, the state has designated biology as the test that is, meets the participation requirements in science, Algebra One in mathematics, and of course, our English test. Now, where it gets a little tricky is we, you saw, we have students who take Algebra One and even geometry in middle school. If they have done that, they then have to take another math test in high school. It's, so that piece is important, but it's also important, right, that some of our students have taken those tests in middle school, right, and passed them, and they've earned their verified credit before they get to high school. So you have those, those are the requirements in terms of assessments. There are many other requirements. There's distributions of how many courses in a given content area you have to take, CTE requirements, other requirements, sequential, I mean, there's lots and lots of pieces of the graduation puzzle, and they differ depending on your diploma type, but the verified credit requirements no longer are different for standard and advanced diploma. They used to be, but they are no longer different. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, mostly. So the only way to get those five verified credits is through the test?
So, yes, with an asterisk. So for students, and so particularly for our students with disabilities, there are, you can earn standard credits with credit accommodation, so there's some more flexibility for them because a multiple-choice test, for the most part, in some cases, may not be the most appropriate measure for them. In addition, students who come close to passing the SOL test within a range that the state has designated and in, and measurement experts have designated as kind of standard error, right, so 375 and above where the passing score is 400. If they've attempted the test twice and they have not passed, they may have the opportunity to earn what's called a locally awarded verified credit, which requires review by folks of content in the course, if they've passed the course, right? You cannot earn a verified credit without passing the course. And so, and you can earn the verified credit just with any failing SOL score. You have to be in that range, and there's a whole process for review for things like that. So those are the ways. In addition, there are also substitute tests that the state will accept in lieu of SOL tests in some cases. So that's the short answer, and can provide more detail if necessary.
Well, we don't need to go into that now. We can talk more when we have the Osborne presentation. I just wanted to commend you on your recall. That's very impressive what you just did. And I think that... And I think that, I mean, I am looking forward to hearing from our, particularly Metz and Osborne, but everybody. And I think that that might be, I'll let you know if I have another question. I think that that's it for me.
Mrs. Ball.
Yes, I just want to give a synopsis, if I may, just to, to everyone in the audience and who may be watching, that MCPS is progressing. Our engagement is showing. Our state superintendent's office says stay the course. That said, I do have full faith in our root cause analysis process and the cycle that works. And so I want to thank everyone in this room for all of their hard work and beyond. That's all.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Casada and Mr. Gaffler. This is a very in-depth presentation and it gives us a huge body of data to look at. And when I'm looking at this, as you were speaking and answering Ms. Breja's questions, you were talking about high school graduation and all the moving parts. And it really struck me how hard our high school teachers, staff, administrators work to get our kids across the stage on time. There are so many moving parts that go in different directions. It's almost like a spider web of actions the school can take to support our students in graduating on time. And that we have our highest graduation rate ever says a lot about the people who work in our schools. So, you know, we do hear a good bit of bashing out in the public, but what people need to see is that 90.2% of our students walked across the stage on time and that's due to the work and effort of the people right down the street at Osborne High School and a number of the people sitting here. And I have to say thank you to all of those people because that's really important. That was really the first thing I wanted to say. It just hit me that there's a lot of hard work that happens day after day and no one gets a pat on the back for it. In fact, a lot of times the people who are doing that hard work get bashed. And we need to realize how hard they're working. We tend to focus on the negative, but we've got to look at the positive. And the positive is 90.2% of our students graduated on time. Now, I don't know if either of you know it. Do you know how many seniors we had last year? I don't know if you know. Because what does that 0.8% represent as far as students?
So they're telling me it's about 565. I know that the cohort last year, I don't have that one, sorry, I don't have that piece of information on the top of, on the tip of my tongue. I will tell you, the graduation cohort for 2024 was slightly smaller than the cohort for 2023. And in fact, the number of dropouts was actually the same from year to year. The percentage was slightly higher because the cohort was slightly smaller, so.
So that's, and I don't mean to interrupt you, that's a really important piece because I was going to ask that question. So the number of students who dropped out, 22, 23, and 23, 24, did not change.
Was the exact same number.
We did not have more students drop out this past year. We just had a slightly smaller class size.
Slightly smaller cohort size.
Cohort size, I'm sorry.
It's just important to say cohort because not everyone who walks across the stage as a graduate, who walked across the stage as a graduate in May was in that cohort because students can graduate early, students may be graduating in five years, you know, so that's important, you know.
So we were not having more students get left behind by not graduating with their cohort. It was the same, okay.
Correct.
I think that's important to note as well. I do have a couple of questions. I'm going to try to go in order. I may get a little bit scattered, but that's okay. So we noticed that with our students who received virtual math instruction, our SOL pass rates were a little bit lower. And we used Virtual Virginia, correct?
Correct.
And Virtual Virginia is VDOE State Virtual Education Platform.
That is correct.
Okay. That I just wanted to make clear. This was not us recruiting our own virtual teachers. This was using what the state wanted us to use. Their platform, their teachers, their instruction. And that was all supposed to be based on the standards, the SOL standards.
That is correct.
Okay. Wanted to make sure of that. Just a couple of quick questions. Can you explain to me, Mr. Gaffler, what is a root cause analysis?
So a root cause analysis is when you have a team of, in our case, educators get together and they will look at all available data. They'll look at student achievement data, they'll look at anecdotal data, look at qualitative data, and they go through a process to determine the why. Why do we think the outcome, we received the outcome that we got? And so once we have that information, then we take that and tie that into the continuous improvement planning process, develop goals to address those concerns, and very specific action steps of how we're going to work to address those. And so when the schools that come, starting the next school board meeting, will talk about two things. They're going to talk about root cause analysis, they're going to talk about what's in their school improvement plan, what actions they're taking. But I also want to, just to say this as well, because it's not necessarily looking and focusing on what didn't work well. It's important that our schools also look at what worked well because we want to replicate that success. And so you're going to see when the, when the schools come, you're, they're going to talk about their successes as well and they're going to talk about why they think they got, received those results and how they can they replicate those moving forward. So that in a nutshell is what our teams are going through in terms of the continuous improvement planning process and root cause analysis.
And so who are some of the individuals who are responsible for the root cause analysis? If you could just give a few.
Okay, so I have worked, I'm in the process of meeting within, in each individual school team, right, to go through and start this process and do what's called, you know, a needs assessment. And as part of the needs assessment, you're doing the root cause analysis and I helped get them started. So obviously, the principals and the administrative teams. And at different schools, you're going to have different people, based on the areas, right, of challenge or success, you're going to have that team be a little bit different. But there's teacher leaders represented, our instructional facilitators. I was at a school yesterday, the family liaison, because they were talking about the growth and improvement in absenteeism, but wanting to continue those efforts. That's a perfect example of someplace that we had success, but you can't then just sit there, right? You have to keep working and you may need different strategies. So it varies a little bit, but administrators, teachers, and sometimes other, other folks, counseling folks are critical as well, so. And then the schools are going to identify their needs and the resources they might need and then we marshal the resources of folks also sitting in this room to come and partner with them, right? Content folks, ESOL folks, special ed folks, other folks to come and support them as they, to help them implement those strategies or provide help in the root cause analysis and digging into some of the data.
And so that's on top of their regular day-to-day activities or responsibilities and duties?
So I would like to say that that's part of the, the leadership work, right? Most of this, they're embedded into their school leadership team activities, right? So in, in an ideal world, that improvement planning is part of the ongoing leadership of the school and we require that they reflect on where their plans are at multiple points during the year, but it should be part of their leadership team discussions. It might involve additional committees and additional data analysis, but it's part of that work.
And then I want us to go backwards to last year. Last year and around this time, we had conversations about the science pass rates at Metz. And root cause analyses were done and strategies were implemented and we saw the outcome of the root cause analyses and the strategies that were used because we've seen growth at Metz in science. So that shows that our analyses have worked, the goals have worked, everything we've done has worked, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. You know, right now, those are my only questions. Like I said, I appreciate the hard work that everyone's done. I'm sure there will be more questions as each school comes forward. But when we look at this as a whole, we have work to do, but we've done a whole lot. And it's not necessarily the people who are sitting up here, aside from Dr. Newman, because we know he does a lot of work, but it's because of the dedication of everyone in this room and everyone in every school. Every classroom. So I really have to say thank you and thank you to all of our teachers, staff, administrators for all the work they've done and continue to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I will wrap it up by acknowledging that we do have a lot of our Manassas City Public Schools family in the audience today. And I want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for the efforts that you make every day in guiding our students to learning. We celebrate the successes with you and we support you through the strategic plan so we can make things even better. I also want to thank the parents in the audience for their partnership because we can't do this without you. And that shows in academics and it shows in attendance and we thank you. So thank you for your presentation tonight. We're looking forward to future presentations and future growth. Up next is board member comments and I'll go first to our student representatives to the school board, Ms. Bland.
I want to say I hope everybody is having a good start to their school year so far. I also want to thank Dr. Casada and Mr. Gaffler for their informative presentation on student academic success. This Friday night, Osborne will be playing football against Hilton High School, at Hilton High School at 7:00 PM. Don't forget to buy your tickets. And also Osborne students, don't forget to buy your homecoming tickets. Tickets will be sold during lunches up until the 20th until homecoming on the 21st. The theme is tangled. See your Class Schoology page for this, for the homecoming week themes next week. I also just want to say, my heart goes out to all the people who were affected at Appalachia High School last week. What happened last Wednesday was inexcusable and I want to encourage everybody to reach out to our legislature and advocate for change because too many kids and teachers are losing their lives over negligence. And it's very sad. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bland. Ms. Breeden.
I also want to thank Dr. Casada and Mr. Gaffler for the awesome, informative statistical presentation. It was very, I learned a lot from that, so I appreciate all your information that you put together. And then to kind of add on what Ms. Bland was saying, before, oh wait, the week after the, this football game, we have the Eagle Tailgate before the football game on September 20th. It starts at 4:30 and you can come out and support. There'll be lots of different clubs and fundraisers for the clubs at Osborne High School. So I feel like that's a great thing to attend. And then also on that night, a very busy night, there's Baldwin movie night. And I don't want to spread misinformation, I don't know exactly when it starts. But I'm, I'm not sure if it starts at 7:30.
5:30 is our back to school night. Right after, we'll have movie on the lawn. It's a real tree. It will be the foundation of our to war wars for our students, not fake news. You got it.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, I want to emphasize, as the voting season approaches, the importance of voting. We have some students at Osborne that are eligible to vote and I want to have everyone please consider registering to vote as the season approaches. I know signs started scattering out on the neighbors' lawns and I'm very excited to see what the people bring to our community, the ones that are running for reelection, and then the new individuals who are running to be elected for new positions. I want to say good luck to all of them when they're campaigning. I'm excited to see what you have to offer and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Breeden. Good reminder. Mrs. Ball.
Yes, on the heels of our wonderful school board reps, I do want to share a few words with the general public regarding negativity about our schools. Our school board works by the book. The current board works in tandem with the superintendent and the superintendent and the school board equal our governance team. The district is not off the rails as some would have you believe. Our school division is well-respected all over the Commonwealth because of our governance team, our policies, and our operations. The politics of school board cannot just be managed a few months every election season. The side of good governance and sanity must be stable and reliable at all time in between these difficult election seasons. Respect between the board, central office, council, and community is essential in public education. Constantly tearing down the school system has a demoralizing effect on staff, parents, and most importantly, our students. Please think long and hard about what our students are seeing and internalizing before you make negative comments about our schools. We recognize that we have not yet reached perfection, but rest assured, we are all committed to excellence in every step that we make at MCPS. So with that information from tonight in mind, please go forth and do, try to promote the good things that you heard tonight. No one's, no one's trying to say that we're perfect, but it does matter how we speak about our schools and it matters mostly to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ball.
And happy birthday, Dr. Goldso.
Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Ms. Bland and Ms. Breeden, great comments, thank you. Ms. Breeden, I didn't realize how civic you are. I do have quite a bit to say. I really dug into these numbers, knowing that we were doing more of a macro look today, so I wanted to provide some additional macro information for everybody. Twenty subjects across the district have declined or equal SOL scores. Eighteen subjects have increased SOL scores. I calculated that out of, 28 subjects have a double-digit variance from state average. Ten subjects have a single-digit variance, one above state average, and six subjects are so close, within, within less than five points of the state averages. I'm not even going to go to world history one, given what, I forget, Dr. Casada or one of you made a comment about that, I'm not even going to go there. Highlights, most of our third and fourth graders have improved in reading and math. Although Rounds' fourth grade reading declined slightly, they're only three points away from state average. I thought that was fantastic. Mayfield's fifth grade reading and math both increased by 10 points and very close to meeting state averages. Baldwin intermediate fifth grade math jumped 27 percentage points and only eight away from the state averages. I believe what Dr. Gaffler said, what works well, that is what we need to highlight and need to spread across the rest of the grades and subjects. You can look up all this information I'm sharing at the Virginia Department of Education's School Qual report, that's where I got it from. It's a lot of work and time consuming, so just trust me. I am super proud of Metz' Algebra I SOL results, which had 100% passing rate and, and, I realize Algebra I at Metz, you're going to assume 100% of the students are going to pass. That would be my assumption, but they are 15 percentage points above the state average. So I had to share that. So a lot of principals are out here and I want to congratulate each and every one of you for the, for the positives. Of course, Osborne High School, the on-time graduation rate and the dropout rates improvements, fantastic. I do, I am going to share a little bit about my thoughts from our no zero in grading policy. It has been argued that removing deadlines and implementing a complete no zero policy evens the playing field. It addresses racial grading disparities, disparities, sorry, benefits struggling students, it gives them more chances to succeed. With little real, real, real research on the impact of such policies, intuitively, they're demervating. They require a great deal of monetary and personal support, as Mrs. Stevens alluded to earlier. It takes a lot of you to support these students. It does. And, and hopefully it will, hopefully the, all the support that we're giving does improve upon these scores that we did this, today. I question how much it really improves the learning. We are going to find out, we've got a whole nother year left. Will they improve the grades? Of course they're going to improve the grades, but another year will pass and more data will be gathered. It will be clear in time, I have no doubt, that too many students will be left behind or passed along without basic reading or writing arithmetic skills. So what I'd like to see this board do is to continue conversations around the grading policy and perhaps, I don't know, maybe start at the lower grade levels to improve upon learning at that point to keep it going. We see a, we see a, we see that line, especially at that, once they get into middle school, things, the expectations seem to really impact their behavior and their habits. So I'm hoping that the habits will be. I'm hoping that the habits will be, will lead to more successful K through 12 experience here at MCPS. If we can just keep, keep looking at this and taking it seriously, we have improved, and I appreciate everybody's hard work, as I said. But we're, we're still, we're, we've got so many double-digit variances from just state averages. And as Mrs. Bresch alluded to, our goal is 80% passing rate. So we have a lot of work to do. And I don't want to, we, we can't lose sight of that. It's our students that I care about. And of course, I care about all of our staff as well, because I know the work is hard. It's a heavy lift, and I know it. And Dr. Newman, I appreciate you. And I'd like to conclude by sharing what I heard just today on a podcast, not the podcast, but on a podcast. And it was, it was a subject about the power of positive thinking. There was a, there's a gentleman named Adam on this podcast. When he was in elementary school, his mother made him and his sister say affirmations walking to school every morning. And you know what? This man, he now has a net worth over $400 million. If he can do that with just a simple positive affirmation every morning, imagine what MCPS can do with positive affirmations at the student level. Take two minutes, let's do that. In your mindset, as teachers and staff, let's do that. And I think, I think together with all of these comprehensive plans and work, workings, and cycle that works, and collaboration, I think we can do this. So let's do it. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you again, Dr. Casada and Mr. Gaffler, for your presentation. And thank you again to all of the staff, those present, and those who are watching from home or just couldn't make it. But thank you for being here, for supporting us and each, you, each other, and for all the work you do, because it's showing, and we're moving up. And like Ms. Ball said, we got to get out there and tell the positive story. So it's all on us to spread it, because then it just webs out to everybody else in a ripple. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Chair. Everything, I just want to echo everything that's been said this evening, but I have nothing but the utmost respect for this administration and all faculty. Being here on the school board for the past three years, four years, one and four, I've learned a lot. And I just want to say, it's something that I know that I probably can't do myself. I've learned nothing but the hard work that you put in. And you see it at graduation. It's not when the student's walking across the stage, it's when the student is pointing to their favorite teacher. That's what I look for. So I hunt for the good stuff. And so, I want to echo Ms. Ball's statement. Let's continue when you fill out the surveys and, and speak about your schools. I want to hear the good stuff, and I want to do more of it, you know. So, again, thank you all. I think we also, I think there's a second annual Under the Lights Unified coming up Friday, at seven, at 7:00 PM. I hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Mrs. Bresch?
Thank you. So I would like to start my remarks today with a quote that I actually heard for the first time, we all heard for the first time, over our retreat, from Dr. Newman. This is a quote from Doc Rivers, who plays some kind of professional ball. There you go.
Basketball?
Basketball. That's the one, okay. But I like the quote. Bad players want to be left alone. Good players want to be coached. Great players want to be told the truth. And things, two things can be true at the same time. People can work very hard with heart and dedication. People can and should appreciate that, as I do. It can also be true that more needs to be done. There's a lot of talk, especially we're in election season, good news, bad news, focus on positive, focus on negative. That doesn't serve our mission. Our mission is to educate the kids. What the kids need is the truth. And the truth is that we have made significant and exciting progress in our early grades. Significant and hard-earned progress at, in our attendance. These are hard-won victories. They deserve celebration. I celebrate them. I recognize them. I notice them. I'm so happy to see them. And I recognize the hard work it took to get there. But it is also true that we still have significant problems. Our goal is 80% of students passing math and reading SOLs. In '21, '22, after that strategic goal was adopted, we had 57% of kids passing their SOLs in reading across the division. And today, that number is still 57%. In math, we started at 49% in '21, '22, and today, two school years later, halfway through the life of the plan, we are at 52% division-wide. And this is just as true as our victories. We need to talk about it. And we need to serve our mission and tune out the noise that is going on around us. I'm looking forward to those discussions. I really have, believe it or not, enjoyed my time on the school board and getting a chance to work with everyone and the diverse perspectives everyone brings to the table. I appreciate everybody in the room right now. But we have more work to do, and I look forward to doing it together. Thank you.
Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. I'm going to be real quick on this. We're dealing with the aftermath of yet another shooting that took away four lives. Four kids who aren't going to walk across the stage, four kids who aren't going, well, two kids who aren't going to cross the stage, two kids who aren't going to go to homecoming, and two adults who had a lot more to look forward to. And once again, in the aftermath, we hear that there were signs. Signs that people saw beforehand. So, you know, the saying holds true, see something, say something. Hear something, say something. And if nobody acts on it, tell it again, and again, and again. Because in almost every instance where there was a school shooting, it could have been prevented. We don't need to be losing any more kids in the prime of their lives. We don't need to be losing any more educators. And every time I hear about a school shooting, as a teacher, because that's what I do during the day, I wonder, what would I do in that situation? What would I do if that shooter was one of my students? What would I do if it was in my school? How would I go on afterwards? Because, at the end of the day, it's not just those we lose, it's everybody who's still, who's still around afterwards. We really have to do more. We have to do more as a society. We have to do more as a nation. Because we shouldn't be losing our children like this. They are our most precious assets. And until we're willing to make a change, and like Ms. Bland said, it takes our legislators to make a change, until we're willing to do that, this is going to continue to happen. And sometimes, after these things happen, I think, when will it happen to us? Maybe not Manassas City, maybe Prince William County, maybe Manassas Park, maybe Fairfax County. I ask myself, is it a matter of time? And that makes me really sad, because nothing matters when our kids are gone. We have to do more. And it takes all of us. Maybe it's a phone call to your legislator. Maybe it's talking to your kids. Maybe it's supporting stronger mental health services. Maybe it's pushing our legislators to provide more funding for mental health services for our students, for a lower counselor-to-student ratio, for more social workers in our school divisions. We have to do more. It's a responsibility of all of us. So, go home, hug your kids. Tomorrow morning, when your kids walk through the door, walk through the doors, look how special they are and amazing they are. And remember, we have to do everything we can to protect them. So, thank you.
I'm going to end with something short, since we've talked a lot about this tonight. Manassas City Public Schools is not responsible for gun violence, but we are responsible for keeping students safe. We will continue to work together to keep our schools a safe place, place to learn and to work. And I want to end this meeting on a positive note, and I really think there's a lot of positive to take out of this, and that there's a plan going forward to address everything we need to address. Thank you all for being here tonight. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Chair moved the school board of City Manassas to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, seconded by Vice Chair Stevens, at the school board meeting, adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned.